There's a new saint in the house, we'll hear more about that with our Indian coverage of the Pope and America. The trial for coming up to talk to you. It's like a pretty holy night, 6:55 traffic coming together every 10 minutes on the bus. Spontaneity on the road. Today's morning. They've got a crash in Van Nuys on your 405 and it's on your northbound side just north of Burbank. Four cars in this crash, they're on right shoulder but there is debris in the white lane. And on the 16, he's found before we get away at that crash slowing you down. It's now right shoulder, traffic has to get a little bit better when you slow them right around down the road. But that should clear up soon. I think you had a car parked in Fontana, Tennessee, probably before Terry. If it's there, it's not causing too much trouble because traffic on that 10 as you make away through the Fontana area. On out of Ontario, Hudson, who looks wide eastbound, westbound, side to Breeze. And one 10 south end of the Marasol, you've got Dust Off Park that is blocking that on route. Four and four capable users, but more Breeze Honda Superstore and all these big super prizes on the Super Selection. New and certified, real Honda's. See why Southern California and returning Norreets year after year. Come on in and find them online at norreethonda.com. You can enter code at 705, Southern California, this was frequent traffic. Northside, Denny's, five, eight, and 70 News Radio. CBS2 weather forecast, high pressure settlement, out of Florida, spring has plenty of sunshine, lots of warm temperatures out there. I think it's tomorrow, they're gonna be in 11 counties up to 100 degrees. Expect mild, high lows to mid to upper 60s, plus the first sky, right now, Colorado's 79 degrees.
The president thinks the whole of prices heads to Washington and Canada for a new exclusive interview with Martin Spies. President Obama, that is the story in which we will come to see how this is the whole.
Last year, the year before, doing the tournament, I was there for a wedding.
He's searching, anytime he comes on, he's like, there's a house.
Yeah, that's cool, that's cool, that's very cool. I got friends that like to build ball carts, too.
Yeah, I like my little ball cart. Where the little seat goes. Go to the Mud Cats and pay $5.
I think my son, I used to have him, a year now, but he's taking to Blair Field, watch the dirtbag. He gets in free, it's like, I'm like six bucks and he'll get a bag of peanuts and six fucker.
Miami League's the way to go.
He parks, he parks like, he's parking here, he parks like 20 yards from the gate. It's quality ball, too.
Yeah, it's more exciting, actually, because they're not as good as the major leagues. So they make mistakes, a lot of errors and stuff like that, and makes it exciting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Have we changed something here?
He's sick, I'm not so sure.
He's got the cooties, she's going like this.
I've got a cold and.
So it wasn't a procedural thing, or anything like that? We're gonna have to pass an ordinance for this.
Oh, nice. That's like she's sitting over here.
Try to ordinance to move the city attorney to the, to the.
Should I hand this out now, or the projections thing?
Wendy wanted to talk about it.
Okay, I'll hand it out right now.
This is short, my kids have got a ballgame tonight.
Is he right here?
I'm calling him.
Man, oh man, what a zoo over there.
It's that way, well, it's usually Friday nights, but tonight.
That field is getting me.
Well, look at it.
We've got to take it down again.
Let's just leave water.
We need 12 weights. We can't water.
I know, but, oh yeah, you have to use recycle.
Yeah, but you know, you can't, you can't drive the trucks.
I got a great, I got a great recycling water system.
You have sprinklers, but you have to do a reverse pump system. Like there's no vault to put the water. We've looked at it all.
Amazing.
You can't just tie your sprinkler system in.
Freaking amazing.
No, I know, but you don't have purple, we don't have purple pipe.
No, we don't have portable ones.
No.
I can't read, I can't.
I'm sure there's federal monies for that.
I got, I got a great story on that.
Yeah, I, I was working on.
I've just been putting out, getting. I can't really see much at work.
Mics.
I don't say anything wrong.
No, it's just like.
Appreciate it.
Some days are worse than others.
You know what I'd like to know more about? Dodger Stadium has a different type of watering system going on, and I can't remember the name of it. But I think it's a trial basis where they extract the moisture from the air, puts it through, they bring the water out and release the oxygen back. And they're watering their field that way. Now, mind you, they've got to be huge.
That doesn't sound cheap.
Well, but I, but if, but look at Dodger Stadium, why aren't all stadiums looking at it? They have the money, sorry.
Baseball stadiums are fake crocs.
Yeah, that hurts.
Yeah, and it doesn't have the longevity of.
No, it doesn't. But it would be interesting to know how it works and how effective it is, what really the cost effectiveness is in water conservation. And that, they had a big.
I just got that app.
Great story.
It's a mag, it uses your phone and it's.
No, no, we are, we are not giving that.
It's called, mine's called Maglite.
Okay, folks.
Interesting.
Sorry.
Catch up at the Christmas party.
Right, I called and ordered the September 23 meeting of the Los Alamos Planning Commission. Can I have a roll call?
Yes, Chair Riley.
Here.
Vice Chair Quilty.
Here.
Commissioner Andrade.
Here.
Commissioner DeBolt.
Here.
Commissioner Gross.
Here.
Commissioner Lo.
Here.
Commissioner Sofukeneck.
Here.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands in the nation under God and the Israel for the day of justice for all.
So now we have oral communications, seeing no one present, I'm going to skip past oral communications and move on to approval of the minutes. Do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None.
I abstain.
Ah, abstention, thank you. Motion carries?
No, I wasn't.
On to the consent calendar, introduction of new commissioner.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, before he was a familiar face, Larry Andrade. Larry Andrade took a little sabbatical, now he's back. And we're pleased to have him, and Elise is gonna give him the oath, because I don't want him to have to shake my hand.
Raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Larry Andrade.
I, Larry Andrade.
Do solemn swear.
Do solemn swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear, I'm sorry.
True faith and allegiance.
Faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States.
That I will bear, I'm sorry.
True faith and allegiance.
True faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
And I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You just need to sign here and you're official.
Yeah. So, that's great news, Larry, it's, it's great to have you back on the commission.
I'm happy to be back, thanks. Good to see some familiar faces.
All right, so now we'll move on to public hearings, of which we have none, which brings us to staff reports. Item 8A, resolution of intention number 15-15.
Thank you, Chair Riley and members of the commission, this is a resolution of intention, this one, which means that you are approving staff to go and research the subject and come back to you with, with some kind of an ordinance about this, if you so choose. And resolution 15-15 is consideration of a resolution of intention by the planning commission to make zoning code changes that would ministerially permit restaurants outside, restaurant outside seating on private sidewalks as permitted, as a permitted use, in order to help satisfy this action of the city's new general plan. And as you may remember, it was part of the general plan to try to make more walkable downtown with strolling, I mean, outdoor restaurants and things like that. So, tonight you can discuss this, but we will come back later on with, after, with our research to present to you in the next couple of months or so.
What, what we've put together is a sample from Santa Monica, who has probably the most experience there is in protecting residents and outside dining after the, the deaths that they had on Third Street Promenade many years ago, as you know. So, we, we started to look around for other ways of proving outside dining, instead of going through the, the onerous, expensive way of getting a CUP. And we found one that did it, and for small, when somebody wanted below 200 square feet. And we kind of thought that might be appealing to this commission to use that as a basis to start the discussion. And to tailor one, maybe similar, maybe not, it's completely up to commission. But it starts entertaining the thoughts of establishing a lesser process for smaller outside dining. As you know, there's two ways to handle the certain outside dining, like at Nyx or at, or Baja Sonora, who are violating our codes, and there's two ways to do it. Be real tough on them, or find an easier way for them to gain approval for a smaller version of what they're doing. Nyx has, is different, Nyx has no desire to serve alcohol, and they're really small and informal. And then Baja Sonora could be small and informal if they had something like this, or they could come back and try to get the CUP the way they have it. But in this example, Santa Monica was interesting, is they didn't require additional parking if it was under 200 square feet. As you know, that's about one and a half spaces or two spaces. In our city, that would require two spaces. One space for every 150 square feet. So we thought it was a nice starting block for the commission to start the discussion of maybe having the normal CUP process for someone that wants something above 200 square feet, and a smaller and ministerial process that already has all the rules laid out for them, for a smaller, under 200 square feet process.
Are both of those under 200 square feet?
I doubt Baja Sonora is, but Nyx probably is.
But Nyx is the whole back.
Yeah.
You know, they have the front and they have the.
Yeah, you're right.
No, no, just the exterior part.
Well, I think that, that back room at Nyx is, I would say it's underutilized, but, because I think people like eating out front there.
They do.
This is stating that the facility has to be under 200 square feet.
This is just the starting block, this commission could go 300, it could go 100.
So you're talking about the outdoors part, not, not the actual restaurant.
Not the restaurant.
So anything, so the restaurant.
If somebody desired to have outside dining, which, the coffee shop here on, on Catala Avenue.
Yeah, Daily Grind.
The Daily Grind wanted to have a couple of tables outside. We've got to find a way to let it happen, without having to go through a CUP and paying an architect and doing all of those things, that many times dissuades people from doing it right.
Now, is this just, is it gonna be like at Nyx and Baja Sonora, because I ate at Baja Sonora and I'm like, hey, have tables outside? Is it gonna be just where they throw tables outside, or we're gonna let them put a little fence around it?
It's whatever rules you adopt.
Okay.
It's, that's where the discussion starts. If you think we could have a prepackaged ordinance here that allows them to do it, you would establish those rules in the ordinance like Santa Monica has. They've said where, when there's alcohol, there's barriers, when there's no alcohol, there doesn't necessarily have to be barriers. You might want to leave some space available for wheelchair access and other pedestrian access, and make sure it doesn't block that access. A number of rules are in here as a starting block for you guys to go by.
They, they covered a lot of bases.
Yeah.
It was actually a lot more detailed than I thought it would have been for what they were trying to accomplish. Almost, I mean, some stuff that might even be a little bit, but it's really nice because it does, it's a foundation to where, you know, it's not a free for all, I mean, there's gonna be some, some guidelines for these people to set up.
You take, you take someone like Ryan Salvoni, who owns the juice shop on Los Alamos Boulevard, just north of Spin.
By the floor.
Yeah, just north of Spin. He'd probably like to put some tables out there.
Yeah, the other areas, the two that came to mind when, when I saw the Santa Monica, the two that I think probably are very good at utilizing the space, you've got the Gaslamp down in San Diego, which, that whole street is just a lot of outside seating.
Santa Monica and the Gaslamp are nothing like our city is now.
Not at all, but what I'm saying is they're very good at establishing rules and guidelines for how they do it. And even in Belmont Shore, on Second Street, you know, you look at a very tight space, very tight space, and they, you know, I don't know what their guidelines look like, but I think I would be curious to see what something like, something that close to us being Long Beach with, with Second Street, and how they.
We can get those for you.
That would be interesting.
They'll probably be very similar.
It might be.
Any other questions or comments for staff?
Yeah. The, if we did the alcohol outside, do they still have to come to us for conditional use permit? Or is that in here?
That's up to you guys, I mean, you're designing this, I mean, you've got to think, are you trying to simplify a lot of steps, or simplify a few steps? You've got to look at the genesis of what you may be trying to do. Are you trying to make it easier for somebody, that they don't have to go through all of these hoops and steps and provide us with a list of every property owner and tenant around their sites for a public hearing? Do you want them to pay for postage? Do you want them to pay for noticing in the newspaper? Those are the things that people have to pay for when they get a CUP and go through that higher level approval. By not making them go through that, then you lower the cost of them applying. And so you would establish an administrative level of review, where we can work with them, look at their site plan, and it goes from there.
The second page on the eligible sites and configurations, on number three, and it's talking about how many feet, because some of our sidewalks, I mean, we're looking at Santa Monica, which has a lot more space in some respects. I'd like to have that reworded so that we're not confining them so much, I don't think that Nyx could fall under some of this, or Baja Sonora's. So I'd like to either remove some of the feet, or look at it and just basically state that if they're gonna do semi-permanent seating out there, can we have it so that we have handicap access enough to get by? That kind of footing or something.
Just make sure that the, the footprint is blocking handicap accessibility.
Yeah, because I think if we do the eight feet or five feet, we're really gonna push them into very little room at all.
I think this is a great, like I said, foundation, but I kind of feel like the entire thing would have to be reworded.
I don't think there's, but I think these are good starting points.
I don't think we could just sit here and.
No. Well, no, but that's what, that's what this, that's what we're doing here.
Our intent is, right, is to.
Right.
You like the idea and then go from there.
Yeah. They have guidelines to move forward.
I like the idea of the potential for having permanent up here, that's why I asked about the awnings and stuff. In here, though, if we're gonna do permanent, I'd want to make sure that it is, it looks nice, it's maintained, so maybe we could look at Belmont Shores, how they have theirs done. I don't want to put an awning up, or a canvas up on the side and have it start tearing, or wearing, or looking bad, I want it to look nice. Those are the things that I, I see in here.
Yeah, for making a simplified project, there's a lot of rules in here.
That's why I just be curious to see Long Beach and see the contrast, and, you know, what overlaps and what doesn't, because each might have their own ideas that could be better than the other, we might be able to take some from one and some from another.
They do, based on their experiences they've gone through.
To me, just in, just in a broad, in a broad stroke, if, if they're going to serve alcohol, or, ABC requires the fence, requires a partition, okay, so that, that, to me, that, that would have to come back to us. And beyond that, if they, well, if they were gonna fence off even without alcohol, I'd want to, I think I'd want to take a hard look at that. But I, but the idea like what Nyx has right now, and, and in Baja, or Baja Sonora, with a few tables and chairs, I don't have a problem with it. I, I look at it as more a, it's on private property, it's kind of the requirement for the, it's more a landlord tenant thing. If, if, if that becomes an issue, like for the, they showed up in our meeting, the, they have the eye doctor.
Eye doctor.
Eye doctor, right there, he's concerned his people can't get through there, well, even with the table sets up, setups without the fencing, if it becomes a problem, then for his customers to get in, to me, that's between him and his landlord. You know, because I'm sure that, that's all incorporated in the lease, he's got to have access. And as far as the ADA compliant and all that, if, if the owners of the businesses don't maintain the ADA compliance, then there's all these lawsuits out. These people running around looking for businesses to sue if there's not adequate ingress, egress, I mean, it's like, the city really doesn't have to get into it, I think there's enough opportunists out there that are.
But if we don't have our guidelines.
No, I'm not saying not have guidelines, I'm just saying that it'd be nice to make it easy, and without.
That's why I like how in this, this one, they actually refer back to the ABC saying, you know, if you're gonna have alcohol, you have to, you know, on top of what we're doing, you have to adhere to the ABC laws.
So if I could poll the commission, you like the idea of finding a streamlined process for small spots?
Right.
Okay.
The board, I don't like, you know, the menu, I don't like a menu posted outside, because I'm afraid that it becomes a clutter, it changes, menus change, but I don't mind the easel.
Well, that's what they're talking about, a sandwich board, in theirs.
Yeah. Sandwich board in the.
They're, they're very specific about that. What I found interesting, though, I don't know, I don't agree with it at all, but I found it interesting that they actually went as specific as saying that food had to be purchased in order to be served, alcohol.
A lot of cities have done that, because restaurants will.
Become bars.
They become bars overnight, they morph into not having food service, they turn into a Boondocks overnight. So you'll have a requirement, you shall serve food, and then all of a sudden, there's frozen food brought in from next door.
Oh, man.
Because, and then they think they're meeting the condition.
Wow.
So, us planners over the years have been through those scenarios, to where cities don't mind alcohol served in restaurants, but they don't want a bunch of bars popping up.
Right.
So, there's a lot of regulation like that.
I think this is a good foundation.
Okay.
I'd like for you guys, for the staff, to work on bringing something back to us, and maybe look at Belmont Shores, too, especially with how they've got their fencing, so that it's nice, it tends to look pretty nice over there.
Does this seem too onerous to you? No?
No, but I think it's something that, like I said, I think should go, we should go through item by item almost, and see if it works for us or not.
Okay.
And I might.
This doesn't deal with public sidewalks, this doesn't allow them to put their stuff on public sidewalks. That would be an encroachment permit, that would be a different process.
Do we need a motion?
Yeah.
We'll, we'll motion to approve the resolution.
Resolution.
One more thing. One thing, though, would you do me a favor and break down two different ways? I'm not opposed to doing the, putting the fence up by the city, or the staff looking at it, allowing alcohol, but can you do two, so that we can look at both?
Yeah.
One that says they have to come to us, and one that says they don't.
We'll do a shopping list.
Okay.
Insert A, insert B.
Yeah, they have, in here, they have, they have some language to that, too, about semi-permanent, you know, if those are questions, I think, like Baja Sonora is a good example, one of the issues there was having a permanent fence and it obstructing, right? So, how do we deal with that? How do we, how do we make this language work?
We've seen some of these that have designs and drawings for it.
Yeah.
We'll bring those back to you, or we actually can email those to you in advance. Let's do that, Tom.
And, and while you're at it, look at a few of these ones around towns and stuff, and, and see what the difference is. Like, for instance, in Santa Monica, you might be thinking of Third Street Promenade. Montana, another street, actually has just basically chairs and tables on the side, they don't have the, the gate around it or anything like that. So that's another good one to look at.
I saw art sitting outside today at Nyx, where I could not get a parking spot for 10 minutes, and I drove around and drove around and finally double parked to pick up my order. I'm like, I'm never coming here again at lunch.
There's a parking lot.
The parking lot was full.
No, 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 the other parking lot.
No, the one on the other side, the two-story, every spot was full, I drove around it twice.
That big parking lot?
The big parking lot.
I was there a lot.
They sent all the hospital workers parked there.
Oh.
Nowhere to park.
And he took the signs down, too, that you don't have to pay there anymore.
Oh, you don't?
At least right now, for the time being, yeah.
I didn't pay attention.
Yeah, so.
Okay, so is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to, for resolution 15-15, as, in here. I have to read it now. I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, motion carry. Which takes us to item 8B, private staff report.
Yeah, Elise is gonna introduce this one.
I am?
Yeah.
It's a prize to me.
She's the non-conforming use and structure specialist.
No.
Or at least she's about to be.
Evidently. So this is another resolution of intent, the planning commission to amend the code, and this one is to make changes to our non-conforming uses and structures, to overhaul this process, as we've seen. Our ordinance has some ambiguities in it, and we would definitely like to bring something back, so we, so we can try and avoid problems in the future on non-conforming uses. And if the planning commission's in agreement, then it would be appropriate to adopt resolution 15-16.
Questions or comments for staff?
I'll move your recommendation.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? None, motion carry.
Shortest moving number.
Items from the community development director?
Um, one minor item, it's not a full-fledged application yet, but we met twice with a hotel developer that is gonna file an application to build a Fairfield Inn on the vacant lot.
Let him read, let him read the minutes of the last.
He already's watched it, and he's read it.
Good.
Is Mr. Fairfield on board with that?
Yeah, that's a good question.
We'll see, we'll see.
That's, that's valid.
If he doesn't learn from the video, I can't.
Bicentin.
Break him in.
Hope you feel better, Steve.
Thank you.
Is it by itself, or not a?
It what?
Without a, without a, another structure?
Yeah, it's only, it's, there's no Starbucks, there's no restaurant.
It came up before.
He, he's done a little more work, and it feels like he needs a big area for drainage to capture all the water. Which the other guy didn't take it that far, so we'll see.
All right, commissioner reports, anything from anybody?
I have a question. Is there a possibility that for the Christmas party, we can include somebody we just lost, Bill? Is that possible, or not?
Um, I think you'll have to ask the council membership.
Okay, I'll talk to them.
It's their party showing their appreciation for you, so I'd reach out that way.
Okay, I'll talk to Richard Murphy.
Did judge him tonight.
What, does, uh? What, what happened at Spin Pizza, you guys?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're closed, he's coming up with a new concept, he's interested in buying for outside dining.
Really?
Yeah.
On the side, on the street, literally.
More than 200 square.
They had just, they had just remodeled that.
Well, it's a brand-new building, so I thought when I saw it closed or remodeling, it seemed kind of strange.
It did work.
I don't think he had enough variety on his menu, yeah, because if he didn't.
Items from the community development director?
One minor item, it's not a full-fledged application yet, but we met twice with a hotel developer that is gonna file an application to build a Fairfield Inn on the vacant lot.
Let him read, let him read the minutes of the last.
He already's watched it, and he's read it.
Good.
Is Mr. Fairfield on board with that? We'll see, we'll see.
If he doesn't learn from the video, I can't.
Hope you feel better, Steve.
Thank you.
Is it by itself?
It what?
Without, without another structure?
Yeah, it's only, it's, there's no Starbucks, there's no restaurant.
It came up before.
He's done a little more work and it feels like he needs a big area for drainage to capture all the water, which the other guy didn't take it that far. So we'll see.
All right, commissioner reports, anything from anybody?
I have a question. Is there a possibility that for the Christmas party, we can include somebody we just lost, Bill? Is that possible or not?
I think you'll have to ask the council membership.
Okay, I'll talk to one.
It's their party showing their appreciation for you, so I'd reach out that way.
Okay, I'll talk to Richard Murphy.
Did judge him tonight. What does, what, what happened at Spin Pizza, you guys?
Yeah, they're, they're, they're closed, he's coming up with a new concept, he's interested in buying for outside dining.
Really?
Yeah.
On the side, on the street, literally.
More than two hundred.
They had just, they had just remodeled it.
Well, it's a brand-new building, so I thought when I saw it closer, remodeling seemed kinda strange to me.
It did work.
I don't think he had enough variety on his menu, yeah, because if he didn't like that style pizza, you didn't have a choice, so. But I would like to mention something else real quick, when did we get the AED?
Those were a month ago, they're all over, in every city building.
Everybody know how to use one?
We had our training yesterday.
As long as one of you do.
If you ever wanna know, I'll be more than happy to show you tickets on that five minutes.
Yeah, they're in all the civic buildings, Cory's in charge of.
I almost needed one yesterday.
He's the captain.
Had to play forty-five minutes of hockey without any subs.
Any, any other commissioner? All right, with that, meeting adjourned.